Resolution 2015-38, First Quarter Financial Reports. We recognize Michael Ann Antici.
Mayor Pro-Tim and Commission, in your packet this evening is the First Quarter Financial Report. You will see in my General Fund summary that our general fund ending cash, less our 112th reserve and the remaining balance designated for the Street Improvement GRT leaves us with available cash of $917,153.25. And as I've noted below, all variances that I had reported in the August report were identified and corrected, and this report does reflect the activity for the first quarter of the fiscal year, and this will be reported to DFA. Our deadline is October 31st. So I'm working on the report once it's reviewed and approved this evening, and we'll submit that by the deadline. You'll also see that our grocery receipts recap year-to-date. This is our general fund grocery receipts is up 3.6473 percent. And so I've kind of listed for you several projects that we have ongoing, that will be ongoing through the month of December, and then we're also anticipating a groundbreaking of the multimodal here soon, and the I-25 South Interchange Project is also progressing, and we'll continue weather permitting also. So all of those projects will help our grocery receipts in the coming months. And so normally where we kind of start to experience the decline in GRT, we're not really seeing that at this point, so that's good for a change, and it's attributed to all of these projects, so that's a good thing. What else I have for you? I've also included for you the actual financial report, and once again, there was no errors or issues, so everything's been identified and corrected, and will be submitted to DFA. We do submit these reports on a cash basis, so that's why we've had to adjust for the accrual due to the new purchase order requisition system that we have. I did want to just mention, under the police grants, which is Fund 209, we did receive a deposit into our account yesterday for the funds from DFA, and that was to cover the dispatch generator and the batteries. So it is showing a negative amount as of September 30th, but as of yesterday, that was received. So the only other outstanding grant reimbursement I had was for the downtown master plan. Does anybody have any specific questions on the financial report?
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2015-38, First Quarter Financial Report.
I'll second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Act on Grant Agreement Between City of Raton and the New Mexico Department of Transportation, Control Number C415092, in the amount of $150,000. Appropriation ID Number 15-0912.
Madam Chair and Commission, this is related to capital outlay that was awarded to the City of Raton from the legislature last year, and remember, they had the special session to talk about capital outlay. So what happens in the meantime is, this is related to severance tax projects, and then bonds are sold. So right now, we're seeing the agreement for that work. We had talked about this, and this agreement is in the amount of $150,000. Our discussion was that this funding would apply to the next phase of the Tiger Drive repaving project, and so that'll be that east area of Tiger Drive from Second Street to actually where the construction left off on the other side of the railroad tracks. So we would probably do that in a couple of increments, a couple of phases, but this would fund the majority of that work. So we bring the agreement to you for your approval. If we can get your approval tonight, we execute it, we start into the planning and environmental clearance phase of the project.
What do we think you might break ground on it sometime next year?
Chairman, Commissioner, it makes sense that we would, by the time we get through the environmental clearance process, it's probably going to be when school is out and we're not conflicting with school traffic. So I think we would try to get our bids in place, and probably about the 1st of June 2016 is when we would look at the actual construction. Like I say, there could be a phase where we do construction in and around the railroad right-of-way prior to that, but this portion of it, I think, would be when school is dismissed.
Therefore, I make a motion to deliberate and act on the grant agreement between the City of Raton and the New Mexico Department of Transportation, Control C415092, in the amount of $150,000, appropriation ID Number 150912. I'll take a roll call.
Tricia will take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
And deliberate and act on Resolution 2015-39, Budget Adjustment Number 2, FY16.
Madam Chair and Commission, in your packet is our budget adjustment number two for fiscal year 16. You will see an anticipation of the action that you just took to approve the $150,000 legislative grant agreement. We are going to request a budget adjustment to add that to our budget for this fiscal year, and that's the one there at the bottom under the Fund 305 DOT Projects. We also have a couple line item adjustments within our zoning budget, and then under the capital projects for the airport, I inadvertently did not include another state grant that we had, that we received for the installation of a gate at the airport. So this budget adjustment would correct that. This was something that the Commission did approve in the prior fiscal year, and if you remember, it did require us to commit a $600 match. So $11,400 is the state grant, and 600 of that would be city match, which we're showing coming out of the general fund. And I would recommend approval of budget adjustment number two.
Any questions?
No questions. Make a motion to approve Resolution 2015-39, Budget Adjustment Number 2, FY16. Second.
Can we have a roll call done on that?
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Deliberate and act on FY 2016 JJAC subcontract agreement between the City of Raton and Valle de Sol of New Mexico LLC.
Madam Chair and Commission, we recently received notification that Soy would be transitioning services to a new company called Valle de Sol of New Mexico, and so as a result, our current sub-agreement was with Soy to provide, as our subcontractor, the services for the girls' circle, boys' council, and the restorative justice. We have received, and I believe a copy is in your packet, of the written pre-approval from CYFD acknowledging and approving our request to now switch the subcontract to Valle de Sol, which would begin effective November 1st, and would run through the end of the grant agreement, which is June 30 of 2016. I've provided you with a copy. Did you hand those out, Tricia? The copies to the Commission?
Yeah.
No, the other ones I gave you. There should be seven copies with the original that I gave you for signature. Tricia's going to pass out to you. We did make some minor revisions, and then we also, yesterday, we were able to get approval from Valle de Sol's president and CEO, who is Kurt Shepherd. So the copy that they're handing out to you now will reflect that approval. And then we did make just some minor revisions to paragraphs three and four, and the only reason I did that was to clarify the dates so that there was no confusion. So the grant agreement does specify that the City of Raton is the contractor, and our grant agreement with CYFD does run on a fiscal year, and it's approved from July 1 through June 30. But then it further, the next paragraph states that the subcontract would be starting November 1, ending June 30 with Valle de Sol. So the wording in the first draft that we had was a little confusing, so we've tried to clarify that, but other than that, the subcontract is the same as the one that was in your packet. I also have with me here this evening our J-JAC Coordinator, Daniela Sparza, if you have any further questions about this change. I believe Furman Yuliberry was going to try and attend, but I don't believe he was able to make it.
With this switch over, is it going to keep the same amount of people there?
It is. We actually had a meeting today here at the city, and Valle de Sol representative, clinical supervisor, was in attendance, and he said it would keep all the same facilitators, the services will be exactly the same, and he will get educated from Furman on how the agency runs it, and at the same time, gather information from myself and the J-JAC Board.
Now, is this just a change with the J-JAC, or is...
It's a change with Olive Soy.
Olive Soy.
Yes, they have taken over every program that Soy had prior to, and they're going to continue to do all of the same servicing, and Valle de Sol is actually a behavior management specialist, and they have the services over to the left side of the Soy building.
Oh, I see.
So now all the services will continue in the same building and continue as they were ran before, except for they are offering insurance and different items of that sort to employees.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the act, or make a motion to approve FY 2016 JJAC subcontract agreement between the City of Raton and Valle de Sol of New Mexico LLC. Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you for your work. Ablelessy transfer and ground lease agreement for hangar lot 7 at Raton Municipal Airport to Mr. Dan Spusa?
Correct.
From the City of Raton.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, at the Raton Municipal Airport, we do have a development plan which designates locations of hangars, and over the years, a number of hangars have been constructed according with that, to that plan. And how it typically works is, the hangars are constructed by aircraft owners, private individuals, and we have executed a ground lease agreement identical to the one that the Commission has, and basically, the ground lease agreement states that that aircraft owner will build a hangar at his expense and own the structure, but it will be placed on city-owned property. And so we have that relationship. It's something that we would like to see at Raton Municipal Airport, is more aircraft and more activity there, more involved aircraft owners. And so historically, for each hangar that you see out there, we have executed a ground lease agreement, and the term is 50 years on the agreement. So the hangar in question was originally constructed by a gentleman, Marty McDermott, and an agreement, a 50-year agreement was executed. There is a proposal to, that Mr. McDermott then would sell that hangar to Mr. Spusa, and so we have two instruments for you. One is the ground lease agreement transfer, which Mr. McDermott and Mr. Spusa have executed to show you that the interest for McDermott is now deeded to Spusa. And then we have a new 50-year ground lease agreement between the City of Raton and Mr. Spusa. You see the lease rates listed there. It's not a big revenue maker, but there is a lease paid for these hangars.
The square footage of most of the buildings, are they the same, or are they very...
They, when we review the plans for a proposed hangar, we want consistency in the look of the hangar, so generally, they're the same. There is one hangar in the back row that is larger, and we do have a place for larger hangars. We also have a designated area for tea hangars, which would be something different, and we would anticipate that we would see additional construction and additional leases coming to you in the next year. There is discussion of additional construction out there, but this hangar is consistent with all of the hangars in that front row for size.
Just looking at them, they look like they are.
Yeah, and that's by design, we want them all to look consistent.
I'll make a motion to approve the, to accept the approval of leasing transfer and ground lease agreement for the hangar in lot number 7 at the Raton Municipal Airport to Mr. Dan Spusa from the City of Raton.
I'll second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Create an Act on Lodger's Tax Board Recommendations.
Madam Chair and Commission, I am going to ask the City Clerk, Tricia Garcia, to review with you the recommendation of the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board.
The tourism coordinator, Vivian Van Sweden, came to the Lodger's Tax Board and asked them for financial assistance in purchasing the Wollkembecks, and the Commission, I mean, I'm sorry, the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board approved that for $384 out of the contingency fund. That's their recommendation to you.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is public hearing application for small brewery wholesale license for Colfax Ale Cellar LLC, and application for a small brewer license for Colfax Ale Cellar LLC.
Madam Chair, Commission, this is the exciting part of the meeting.
Yes, it is.
Much anticipated license, and we do have the owners and applicants are present, Mr. and Mrs. Sterns, and it is a public hearing for input of public. I would also point out that you do have a written input from the Episcopal Church in your packet, they're providing your input, and that input is related to a distance requirement, and it, as a part of the action later in the agenda, it would require the Commission to approve a waiver of the 300-foot distance. And the exact distance from the facility to the church, I think Mr. and Mrs. Sterns can tell us that, but it's pretty close to the 300 feet as I remember.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, as you know, my husband Jim Sterns and I have been in the process of developing the property at 215 South Second Street for a brewery, and tonight, we do ask for your approval for the liquor licenses as well as the waiver. When we had measured the distance between our property and the church, we had measured, and we were just simply using Google Maps, we had measured 270 feet approximately, and we were approximating the property lines, and when the state had actually posted our application on our window, they in turn had measured the distance themselves, and I believe they came up with 297 feet, so we're really close. And prior to purchasing the building, we did meet with vicar Tim Sexton, because we did want to tell him of our intention of purchasing the property and developing it as a brewery in order to sell beer at the premises, and he was wonderful to meet with, and in turn, had actually provided the letter of support for the business.
It doesn't look like he's there opposed to it at all.
We've never received anything but a positive level of support from them.
Now, is he the one that is, he's moved, hasn't he?
He has moved.
Relocated. And have you contacted, do they have a new vicar?
No. At the time of us applying for the liquor licenses, that position was in limbo.
Right. But, I can't...
As far as I know, the Church Council and everybody there has made no...
They're all in agreement.
They're in agreement with Father Sexton, and I think that they're having floating vicars do the masses and stuff now, until they get a permanent one. But I see no problem personally.
Are we on Item H, public hearing yet, or...
We are on that dotted action item, but this is public hearing.
Right. Yes, we're on Item H.
Is anybody in the audience there to protest the... I see no problem. I think we should move to the...
Move on to Item I. Deliberate and act on approval and application from Colfax Ale Cellar LLC for a small brewer wholesale license and small brewery license.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the small brewery wholesale license for Colfax Ale Cellar LLC, and the application for the small brewery license for the Colfax Ale Cellar LLC. I'll second that. Are we going to have, are we going to get a picture, are you going to show us that? Friend up here.
It's on the board.
We have an overview right behind you currently, sorry about that.
And probably a little hard to see.
As I'm concerned with the one we have here, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so the bottom illustration is an elevation view of the cellar, as well as the first floor, and so there, we're trying to depict where we're going to be doing the brewery operations, is primarily in the cellar, where we'll be brewing the beer, as well as fermenting the beer, and then we will have the tap room up on the first floor at the front of the building, and that's where we will be serving the beer.
That's the important part.
That's the important part.
Do you have to sell snacks with the beer, or no?
We will have snacks. We have no kitchen in the plans right now.
Things like crackers and cheese?
Sure. Crackers, cheese.
Cold sandwiches.
Cold sandwiches, and plus, we have three, at least three emerging restaurants in the neighborhood that will have takeout and delivery. We hope, we'll work with them.
Yeah, we would rather, we would rather not, we would rather focus on brewing the beer, and given the fact that we do have some new businesses right on our block, we're happy to support them, and you know, really want to be able to have them deliver some food to the brewery.
Well, we've had a motion and a second.
For Jay. I'll make a motion to accept the waiver for the Colfax Ale Cellar LLC for selling beer within 300 feet of the Holy Trinity Episcopal Church. Second. I and Jay.
I and Jay.
I and Jay.
Yeah. We'll have Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you much.
City Managers Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'd like to take a minute to run through progress on our construction projects, and I think it's helpful sometimes to have a visual that we can look at, some photos. We talked about these projects quite a bit, but this will maybe help give you an idea of progress. So we are working on a drainage project on Cook Avenue and Park Avenue. That is funded by capital outlay from a couple of years ago, and that is a storm drain inlet that we're looking at there now. What happens is, we pick up storm water in that box, which is built out of brick, probably 1930s construction, and then a pipe goes from either side of the intersection to the middle of the street where we have a manhole, and the manhole is junction with the main line. That, all of that storm water then runs to First Street, and ultimately into Raton Creek. So the project involves, we have had some flooding issues, specifically on Park Avenue in the Business District, and the intent is to try to correct some of this age and deficiency of the storm drain system within the funding that we have. So there, you see a storm drain inlet that is not functional, and the goal is to try to get that storm water to actually be picked up by the system. So there, across the street, is a storm drain that's been replaced by the contractor, Century Club Construction. They're in progress there, pouring concrete. We now have two of those completed, and we'll have two more completed tomorrow. For, I think there's a total of 12 on the bid schedule to complete. Part of the construction, there is, there's a better view of storm drain inlet that has been formed up. You see the metal grates are in place, and I think concrete was poured on that one later today. That picture was earlier this morning, and then concrete was placed today. In the middle of the street is the manhole, also constructed out of brick, and included in the project is renovation of those. So what you see there is a contractor hanging upside down, and he is placing an epoxy liner inside of that that's sprayed on. So they've completed six of those manholes. It's a system called the Raven lining system, and so we kept the brick manhole and just renovated it. That's what the liner looks like. It's a very small space, so a person can't get down in there and get the bottom. So they hang them upside down in order to get in those tight spaces and be able to spray all of that. But that's a, that's a liner that will indefinitely extend the life of those brick manholes as a money saver to just replacing those.
How far does the liner extend?
Well, we dropped the guy all the way to the bottom, and it just depends on the depth of the manhole. That particular one was about seven feet deep, so he was in, you know, all the way in on that one. The shallowest ones we have are about four feet deep.
Is that liner rigid, or does it seem...
It is. It's rigid, yeah. And they start out with a cement, kind of a scratch coat, and line the brick, and then they spray that over the cement lining. So it's a two-part process. That part of the project is now complete. Now, what we're looking at is down on First Street. We had stated that we were going to rehabilitate the pavement on the length of First Street. The pavement rehabilitation, what that consists of is, we'll have a large milling machine mill off the top inch and a half of the existing pavement, and then place an inch and a half asphalt overlay over all of the asphalt parts of First Street. It's exactly the process that we did on Tiger Drive earlier in the year, and that will take place next week. Prior to the milling and the paving, we are replacing broken curb and gutter on First Street, so I have a few shots of the contractor replacing curb and gutter, and then we would caution people on First Street, specifically the businesses, that it's going to be, accessibility is going to be very tough next week with the milling machine, a lot of trucks, the paving. Generally, we just shut that area down. So I would try to access the businesses from the avenues, park on the avenues, and walk to any of the businesses. And I know that some of the businesses have stated they were just going to try to close for the week, but not all of the businesses. So if somebody wants to get to those businesses, please park on the avenue and access them that way. So that's curb and gutter. The plumbing project at the library is now complete. We did replace old galvanized piping throughout the building. We removed asbestos insulation that was throughout the building. This is a picture of a copper assembly, which includes isolation valves, pressure-reducing valve, and backflow, and this is the service coming into the building. But throughout the building, we used a plastic... This is a picture of a copper assembly, which includes isolation valves, pressure-reducing valve, and backflow. And this is the service coming into the building. But throughout the building, we used a plastic pipe. That work is now done, complete. And the good part is the asbestos is all gone. As you recall, some months ago, we had a couple of leaks from that galvanized piping. And when we fixed that, that old pipe was really shot. This is in the basement of the library. And the concern was that we would have a pipe break at a time when nobody was around on a weekend or something. And, you know, it would just run. So we feel confident about the safety of the library now. So that one is done. On the multimodal project, we understand that the contractor has received a building permit. And that's what they've been working on since we awarded the project. We would anticipate that they're ready to mobilize to the site and begin work on multimodals. So we ought to see that going on. I don't have a firm date for you on when they mobilize up, but I would not be surprised to see them there next week. And then the Pecos-Galistejo repaving project, that's two blocks of Pecos, one block of Galistejo. We still have the same process there. We need to replace some curb and gutter that's broken. The contractor stated that they would be on Galistejo probably this work, this week, excuse me, replacing or removing some of the existing asphalt paving. And on Galistejo, for one block in the vicinity of the senior center, we'll remove the existing asphalt and place a new asphalt course there. So that will be going on. At Sigerson Creek, Dan did a good job of reporting where we are at, at Sigerson Creek. What I have left is I'll tell you about events coming up. On October 29th, I had planned to be in Albuquerque at safety training. And there is a requirement in order for the city to receive their dividend through the, through our insurance, that the city manager attend an eight-hour safety training every year. So I'll be down there October 29th, attending that. October 30th, the following day, I will attend the brunch, the infrastructure conference in which Raton and Raton Main Street will receive an award. And I thought I had that sheet here, but for economic development. And, you know, we talked about the brewery coming in and the restaurants opening up. And I really shouldn't take credit for that. But we're going to go to this brunch and go ahead and take credit for that economic development. It's not fair, but we're going to go ahead and do it. There have been a lot of efforts by Raton Main Street. We really have an active group. I'd like to recognize their efforts. It's our goal to, you know, make these improvements in the downtown area and make it a more attractive place for businesses and the customers of those businesses. So we intend to do our part on an ongoing basis. On November 6th, I will attend a meeting with Cabinet Secretary of Economic Development, John Borella. That will be a meeting set up by New Mexico Main Street and Raton Main Street. And we'll talk about potential projects under the Local Economic Development Act and funds that the state has, and specifically the Great Blocks Project on First Street, and see what the prospect for obtaining funding for that project will be. And then on November 17th, I have a meeting scheduled with the Lieutenant Governor, John Sanchez, in Santa Fe. And we will be talking about some economic development issues with the Lieutenant Governor. We'll also talk about the possibility of additional lead of funding for economic development prospects that we're in contact with for Raton. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
City manager, Barry didn't, Main Street get the national accreditation? They got this on the last, so they're nationally accredited?
You know, Commissioner, I'm not sure of that. I don't know, Jason, do you know the standing on their accreditation? I think it's an ongoing process they've reported to us. I did have one additional item, and I almost forgot to bring this up with you. But I do have a press release, US Senator Martin Heinrich's office. You, the Commissioners, have a copy of that there, and it's dated yesterday. And I would tell you that Senator Heinrich did call Mayor Protim Sagata yesterday, had a conversation with him on the phone. And that is in regard to the application for Tiger Grant funding that would go towards the Amtrak's Southwest Chief Line. And so the senator has issued this press release. And let me read the first paragraph. "Today, US Senators Tom Udall and Martin Heinrich and US Representatives Michelle Luhon Grisham, Steve Pierce, and Ben Ray Luhon announced that the US Department of Transportation has awarded $15,210,143 for the Southwest Chief Route Advancement and Improvement Project to continue essential upgrades to Amtrak Southwest Chief Line." I would like to acknowledge that the City of La Jolla, Colorado, really took the lead in that Tiger Grant application. And city manager of La Jolla, Rick Klein, really worked hard to get all of the communities together, get the cooperation of everyone, get the application in, and then follow up with the Department of Transportation. So thanks to Rick, he really worked hard on that. And also locally, County Commissioner Bill Sobel from Colfax County also worked equally hard, made the rounds, contacted everyone, built support. And that support, the collaborative effort on this Tiger Grant application was really successful. So this is huge in order to keep Amtrak coming here and the potential of freight on this line in the future. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Well, that was worth it. Thank you. Any other questions? Any other items from citizens present? We will now go into closed session, closed executive session pursuant to New Mexico SA 10-15-1H7.
I'll make a motion that we move into closed session at this time.
I'll second that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.